For that ready reading thing.
I don't know how to do that one.
Is it muted or is it re- recording everything we're saying? Oh, there we go.
I put a recording on there.
Okay, now we're recording. Hallelujah. So this is the Maynard zoning board of appeals meeting. It's August twenty six, twenty twenty four. It's seven oh five P M. And just to refresh everybody who we are, I'm Paul Scheiner, the chairman of the zoning board. And John?
John Corville, member of the Z D A.
Paige?
I'm Paige, the figure of the vice chair.
Leslie?
Uh, Leslie Bryant, just member.
Okay, Jerry?
Jerry Calvert, board member.
And Brad?
Brad Schultz, alternate member.
Alternate. So that's who we are. In the corner, you can see this guy drinking his beer already. That's Bill Nemser from town. He's the one that keeps us honest. And so our first case is a, no, our first case is approving the minutes of last month. So everybody had a chance to review them.
Uh, is this the seven twenty four?
Probably.
Yes.
Okay, so and the copy that I read, it gave the uh year is twenty twenty three.
Oops. You got it. And the bottom is on the footer, it's correct. On that, the top it is not. You're right.
Okay, there's. Need to correct that.
Yeah.
That proves I read them.
So can we get somebody to make a motion to that effect with the correction?
Well, I have one more question on.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Paul. The last, the the first sentence after the bullet points, which as Mr. Shiner suggested.
Yeah.
There's a, it says, Mr. Nemser to connect with the D P W figured to figure out W O. What is W O?
Oh, I'm guessing that was how.
Okay.
And and now you mention it, it's not curb, it was curb.
Okay.
Oh. Curve, curve, curve.
But I guess we're keeping the town on us this time.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Any other corrections before we make the motion? Looks good. So can I have a motion made with those corrections?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the seven twenty four twenty four meeting with the corrections as uh noted about the date and the spelling of particular words.
Excellent. So wait, second, okay, Jerry, second. Uh, all in favor, roll call. John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes as well. So we got lots of approval for the minutes. So now to our first uh case. This is a continuance from seven twenty four where we will uh consider the application submitted by Joanna Morelles of two nineteen Bishop Drive, Framingham. The structure, the subject property six Glendale is a pre-existing non-conforming structure located in a business zoning district. Subject property's current use is an auto detailing shop. The applicant is proposing the use of auto repair. Because the subject, the structure on a subject property is non-conforming due to insufficient frontage and setbacks, a finding by the Z B A is required per the zoning bylaws that the proposed structural improvements are no more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure currently is. The Z B A charge in this application is limited to modifications of a non-conforming structure as proposed by the applicant. The proposed change of use is not part of this finding. Now, we have been going through this for the last several months, Joanna, from, you know, various discussions we've had and postponements of meetings and so on. But the issue that we are looking for to discuss is what are you planning to do to the structure? That is not there now, that things you'd want to change. And we consider those structural improvements to consider those as being more or less detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yes, sorry, if I mute a lot is because I'm at home and my sister and daughter are screaming in the background, playing, doing something with the dog, so. Um, yes, what we'd like to do for like the structure is uh since we deal with a lot of chemicals of just, you know, with the um changing of oil and brakes and everything, we want to put in vacuum filter, like just to get all, I don't know the exact name, but something that like kind of filters out all the smell, so it doesn't leave the building. Um, and if there's any dust around, it vacuums that up too, so like a.
Okay, you're describing two different items.
Well, a vacuum, there's like certain vacuums where you can suck up the dust or you can use it as like a vent for any like.
Well, vacuuming up dust is one thing. Scavenging vaporous chemical odors is something different. So are you talking about scrubbing the air of any chemical odors that might leave the building, or are you talking about dust?
Well, one would be for the chemical odor.
Okay, that's different than the dust.
Okay, so then we'd be, we'd have to find a second, like a second place for any particles in the air.
Yeah, because the odor one would have something that captures the the chemical, like unactivated charcoal. And you'd have to maintain that charcoal and and filter, change the filter, the activated charcoal filter. I don't know, depending on how much you put into it, once a week, once a month, something like that, just to make sure it still is filtering. And then the dust filter is like your giant vacuum cleaner of what you might have at your home. Just gathering dust. So those those are two very different elements.
We, and we would place those in like the back, um on the side of the building in in the back. Um, it, in the back of the building, there is a um uh like a porch type thing, so we probably just close up one side because we don't need all three doors in the back um to place the air filter and the vacuum. But inside the building, we would need to uh restructure, not restructure completely, just um add a a lift to lift the cars because that is more secure than using a normal jack, what you'd use to just put a new tire on.
Okay.
Um, but other than that, there's really no other changes that we would need to make. Um, just those big things to help with the business.
Okay, now, the board here will discuss this and make comments if these are more or less I'm saying the words wrong, substantially more detrimental or not to the neighborhood. We will make it a conclusion on each one of those. And then you take your application off to the planning board. I understand you've been talking with them. And they will look at the change of use issues regarding your structure.
Correct.
And so what we will have in front of us is uh a comment whether adding the vacuum filter is more or less, I keep saying it wrong, substantially more detrimental or not. And the same with the dust and the same with closing off the porch and the same with the lift. So that's so far four decisions we need to make here, whether they are substantially more detrimental or not. Is there anything else that we need to consider in your structural improvements to the structure?
No, those are like the main keys. Other than that, we wouldn't have to make any other changes to the building to uh make it work.
Okay. So board members, you you understand what we are tasked with doing here? Do we have any questions from you guys?
So there's nothing that's going to um change the footprint of the building. Is that correct?
You mean like taking off?
Well, it's not going to be any you know, bigger, um, the.
Or additions.
No, we're not, we're not um like adding on or anything. We're just pretty much all we're doing is just attaching a vacuum type thing to the back of the building and obviously we're gonna have to like redo the wall of some sort so we can add the filtration. So then it can take the um machine can take it out and it's the same with the um for like the vacuum as well.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not like adding to make the building bigger. We just need to add and probably knock down the wall or however it works just to get the the machines to work.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that's making any sense. Um.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering um then how visible if it's going to create something that's more um visible to the neighbors that might back up onto that part of your building or.
Oh, so in the, if you were ever to be on Glendale Street, it's just this big parking lot. And then there's some room on the side that we could probably just add like for the um the vent just to suck up all the odor. And then on the back part where the porch is, it's a little bit wider that we would be able to fit a tube like thing to suck up all the um sand, not sand, dust.
Mm-hmm.
So it wouldn't look um like a mess type thing, because right now, if you were to look at it, it's just a bunch of lea- from the previous people that were there, they left a bunch of barrels and um the whole back needs to be uh raked in, cleaned up. It's more of like mud over there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion, a a suggestion and a comment? Um. If the board considers the proposed changes and there were significant changes at the plan, if at the planning board stage. Um, I have to research if once this determination is made, if the applicant would have to come back if something changed. I suspect it would be uh if this board determined there was no um or there was or was not a significant impact, that standing would stay and then the rest would be with the planning board because they do review design standards.
Um, so you're right, Bill. Because we can, you know, we've got four notes here. There's probably a few more, but we've got four items that we need to consider so far. And whatever we decide on these four, it goes to the planning board. The planning board might discover as they go through their process that there are other items that would change the structure.
Right.
Need to be added. Those would have to come back to us.
I'm not sure because they are also gonna, they have to conduct design review as well. I'll, 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 I'll firm that up. If I just thought of that, you know, that it could be. Uh, so for if um for something so not so specific, the board could say, for example, exterior mechanical equipment associated with air circulation or something like that on the east side of the building or you know, something like that. So if there was another pipe added, it wouldn't be, there would be no question in case that happens. That's what I was gonna say, but.
Yeah, because where where I was going and 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 this Joanna is something that I remember from last time. You were talking about using uh or installing an air conditioner for the structure. What kind of air conditioner are you considering? One of these rooftop units, what, put it out also on the back porch or what?
The air conditioner, so it doesn't get hot if it's behind closed doors, that one. So you know, um you know, it's like the central A Cs that um people put in their like offices that are big, so then it can get and cool the whole room.
Mm-hmm.
So one, so there's one A C um on the first bay on the left. So it's one of those A Cs that we'd have to put in place in the second and the third bay because those are like the commercial big giant A Cs that you wouldn't go to BJ's to buy. You'd have to buy it from like U line or.
All right, so you're saying that in each one of the technician bays, you're gonna have an air conditioner installed?
Yes, so when it's hot and if we have to have the doors closed because of noise, um, they're not going to be extremely hot and um overheating.
Okay, and is there gonna be an outside heat exchanger that goes with that air conditioner? Or is that gonna be on this back porch as well?
Um, I don't think it'd be on the back porch because the way that the garages are set up, it would, I don't think you need um I don't think it goes anywhere outside. I have to double check. Um, let me, let me look for a second because there's.
You do have to have someplace to dump the hot air you're pulling out of the building and that's usually a device outside the building.
Um.
Well, you have a current unit, right, Joanna? We have one.
We have one in one unit. I just, that's on the left side and it's too tight to squeeze, so I never actually looked to see on how it's coming. I just know it's on the wall. Um.
Well, there's gonna be an exterior exchange, I believe, which they're asking some sort, right?
I'm sure because it's because it's on the wall that goes to towards the outside, so I'm, we would have to probably put like the middle garage, it probably would have to be on the back of the building. Because the middle, you can't put on either side unless it's above the garage door, but you can't do that because the door.
So let let me get a better understanding of this air conditioner unit that you're talking about. Is it like a homeowner unit that you would put into a window?
No, um, let me see if I can find it. So well, I guess you can buy it at Home Depot. Uh, let me just get a better picture. So it's.
Hold it back for her. No, no, I totally put it next to your face so we can see it there. All I, all I see is a line. When you bring it closer, it's out of focus.
Oh, I see it.
So you can find it at like Home Depot?
It's a mini split.
Okay, so there is something outside for the heat exchanger.
I don't think that's a mini split. I think that's a uh standalone room where you need to have a uh exhaust on it.
Yeah, it's gonna have the little.
Much more complicated. It's a, that that's, you need an outdoor unit.
The.
And it's all an indoor unit.
The name here said, oh changed, thirty six thousand B T U three ton duckless mini split air handler with.
Okay, that, and that isn't it, yeah.
Okay.
And you need an out, you need an outdoor unit to go along with this, that condenser stays.
And you would be putting one of these in each of, you said you're gonna need two more than what you have now?
Need two more, um, just so we can make sure that no mechanic overheats. I don't need any ambulance being called for heat stroke. I'm already working in the hospital. I don't need to be assisting that either.
So from our past discussions, I'm asking the board members now, do you recall anything else that she had described that would be a structural change? I think this is it then. So we need to discuss the the ventilation system where she's talking about scrubbing odor and then dust. And then uh air conditioner units, those are all outside pieces. And then uh closing off this porch to help with that, but you can't close it off entirely if you're gonna have these exhausts and then adding a lift. So that that's what I'm seeing as items to discuss here is building heat exchange and dust and an odor. Structural something or other on the back of the building to close off this porch and cutting holes in the wall to put this duct system in. And then the uh addition of a car lift. And so our task here is to determine if these are structurally or excuse me, significantly more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. So thoughts, please?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Um, the many splits um are very quiet and they're very um uh almost invisible when they're operating. Um, especially if they're mounted in the back or to the sides of the building. Uh, they run very quietly, so as 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 far as the air conditioning system goes, they're very quiet and they're very efficient, so um, I think they're a very good choice for this application.
Good. And just remember, Brad, you're you're the part, the the non-participating observer on this particular.
Right, yeah, right. And I I just wanted to make sure that I was um um, I I I believe I'm allowed to um to uh discuss but not vote, correct?
I, I, I think so, because in one case, you're actually a sort of in a butter, aren't you, or a butter to.
Well, yeah, I'm not officially a butter, but I live very close, so um I have recused myself on this in terms of voting um and things like that, you know, and that, so it's up to but whatever, whatever you think is appropriate or not for me to do, I'll be, I'll have to abide by that.
Okay, so just just as a quick interruption here, Danny, I see your hand raised. I I we can get to you in a bit. We're still discussing amongst the board members. And then we'll ask for uh comments from the general public if you don't mind. So um, where are we? We got one comment there from Brad on the mini splits. What about uh the exhaust filtration system for dust and for odors? Any comments on that?
I'm still confused. Is the, is the, is the unit gonna be inside or is it just gonna be a hole cut? Like with a fan blowing it out? I'm just not sure where the actual dust and ventilation units is gonna be situated. It's gonna be on that porch that's gonna be enclosed or?
Well, so the back is like a long porch.
Yep.
So we would just kind of cut it off and then just put a railing, so it'd be half a porch. But the ventilation system would go there and it would suck up all the stuff because we don't want to put it in the air because, you know, we have Mary Jo's daycare and then move it. So we want to try to capture everything that we possibly can from the dust with the vacuum and then the odor, the odor tank or something, just to capture all that.
Okay. On the porch, got it. Thank you.
So if it's uh mini splits, where will the heat pumps go?
Here, I'm you, Joanna.
We'd have to put one on the side of the building, so like on the right side to um put it there because we wouldn't be able to put it um in the back of the building. Just because if we have the vent there for the vacuum, it's gonna be too big. So then in the middle, we would have to put it in the back of the building because the middle garage doesn't have a side. Because it's in the middle of the building.
So on these mini splits, I thought you can have more than one interior fan on one heat exchanger on the outside, so you should be able to gang the different coolers against one heat exchanger that you put outside. And if you already got one outside, you're just gonna put more coolers inside.
Oh, then I would have to figure out. I'm I'm not a HVAC, so I don't know. I know how to do the wall units like for the window. But I don't know this, I just know that we have one in one bay and it works perfectly. So that's why I thought we could just put it for the other two. So if that's the case, then we can make it so it works that way. So it's less a hassle than having to figure out and reconstruct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other questions on these?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just have a general question. I know there's been a lot of talk about this porch. Do we have, I know there's photos of the site. Can we share those and and look at the porch? I'm just confused as to where exactly the porch is that's going to be. Uh, house this equipment.
Bill, can you help us out?
I don't know that I have them. Let me find, let me see if I've got here.
This is up against a property line in back, right?
That's what it sounds like. The photos I was looking, looking at shows a porch
Did they?
On the sidewalk, near the sidewalk, but I didn't, I didn't think that was the right porch or the porch that we're talking about. I just wanted to confirm.
Let me see what I can find here. One day, I can't run. I took a bunch of pictures, but I don't remember now.
Well, if it's up tight in the back, I don't think you can get to it to take a picture.
See, maybe that's like that's why I didn't see one.
You can walk around that property, so it's, it's not like it's that tight.
There we go, okay. I'll share my screen with everything I have. Maybe I can do a Google Earth if it's not there, but let's share if, see if I can get it.
Thanks, Bill. And there's a picture of the porch and it looked like some trucks in a snowplow and I just wanted to confirm that's not the porch that we were talking about.
Wow. Oh. Close. You guys see that?
Not yet.
No.
Oh. Hmm.
Started sharing your screen. There we.
Oh, there we go.
There you go. So it's that building way in the back that we're talking about.
This?
Okay.
Yeah.
This right here?
That's.
With the three dormer. I, I, oh, I thought, I thought there was a porch that went all the way across the back.
Yeah, I think you're pointing to another house on uh, on Summer Street there.
Yeah. Oh, um, it's gonna get bigger. Yeah.
I believe that, I believe the house that you're looking at, what those vehicles are on, for Glendale Street.
That one is for Glendale?
Yeah.
Bill, what about slide three? I see a side view.
Oh, that's a parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's for Glendale Street.
The, the um porch is in the back, back, like you could see it from the old fire station if you were to stand out there.
Well, let, let's see. So you you're saying that it is a.
There you go.
Yeah. So it's like roughly on right here?
Yeah, and it runs along the whole entire back. There's like three doors for each bay to get out of.
That's helpful. Thank you.
That's why I couldn't get a picture. I can't drop off. I got right there. I have to go back there.
Yeah, but I think there's trees blocking the the view.
Yeah.
Back in the day, we would go on a field trip.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, this looks like a non-conforming frontage. Um, what is?
We should take it in front of the zoning board to rezone that area.
That's a different meeting, Bill.
Holy cow.
And uh just give you the other pictures from my collection.
So if you, can you show the front of the um six Glendale? All right, so if you, well, without the tree, but the porch just runs along all in the back of that whole building. So with each unit, there's a door to the porch. And then there's a set of stairs that goes down and then it's about, and there's like a little area. Um, so where that right side is, I would take off the porch there and then just have the two doors for the middle bay and the um left bay to be able to get down because the stairs start at the second bay, so we could just kind of cut off the third side and add that vent.
Oh, this is getting complicated.
Yeah, I I I believe that deck is about six feet wide that runs on the second floor from the entire length of the building.
So there's a second floor deck above the porch?
Yeah, it's just about, well, no, it's above, it's a deck, yeah, it's basically that.
Yeah.
With a roof or no roof?
No roof.
So when you say a porch, are you on the first floor or second floor?
Second floor, sorry, I call it a porch, but deck.
Yeah, sounds like a deck.
And so your your thought here is to close off this porch for the air handling issues?
Yes.
I'm I'm guessing that the people that are gonna install the uh these things are probably gonna wanna put it on the ground below the porch, and it won't have a problem.
Alright.
Well, I know that um with these types of things, you you can get like different sizes. So like if you need a smoke, cuz depending on the square footage of. Um, the unit that you're using, you you need to have. Compared to that, so like if it's a small area that you're gonna be sucking up the sand, then you're gonna have a smaller vacuum type thing.
So let let me ask a dumb question. We've been going back and forth here now for several months, Joanna, and you know what we're looking for. Do you have the specifications on the units that you wanna put in?
We have one, I don't know the sizes, I just know that we have one. And we just never installed it because we can't install it until we get approval to install it. Um, but I know that one is, I think it's about a. I wanna say about eight feet tall.
And what is this thing you're talking?
This is the vacuum.
Okay, so this is something that's right at the work bay.
We have it, we just didn't, and so we, it I think it's um. Kind of like stored somewhere in one of the bays.
Okay, but does this exhaust outside, is it just filter the air and send it back inside?
No, it exhausts outside cuz the vacuum, it's sucking up, this is for any dust particles or anything that um is in the air.
Okay.
It doesn't come back out into, like it doesn't like give you clean air, it just sucks it up.
I, Mr. Chair, I think I think the board is gonna wrap themselves in knots with this if uh. Uh, if we don't go by the location, um, you know, so external. Mechanical equipment associated with HVAC and air filtration on the east side, on the west side, might be the easiest way to do this. I'm I'm on Google Earth right now, uh, trying to see if I can get a view, but I I can't, Summer Street.
So one thing I'm struggling with is I know that there are dust collection systems. That suck the air. Dust laden air inside of a building. And just clean it right there because it sends it through a filter. And if you're talking that kind of a unit, but it blows it outside. Think chemistry lab hoods kind of thing where they suck the air and just push it outside. Now, now you either put a charcoal filter in there or just, you know, the solution to pollution is dilution kind of thing.
No, we wouldn't be putting anything that wasn't um clean, oh, into the.
And and the the point is, where is the motor that runs these things? If it's a chemical lab kind of hood situation, the motor's on the roof, because you wanna suck. And have all the pipe under vacuum as you're sucking out the bad stuff. If it's simply a dust collector, like an overgrown vacuum cleaner. You can have the motor right there, it's it's loud, but you can have the motor right there in the room where you're working. And for us to look if it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. I think on this issue, it's the noise, is there going to be an exterior noise from running all these vacuum kind of things outside? Because where are you gonna put the collection dust? You got three bays in there, are you gonna have a dust and odor collector in each bay? Or is it gonna be only one bay that you're gonna make any dust and any odor? I I don't know, I'm trying to get that.
It, well, that's what I was saying, it would be for one bay cuz the lift would be in another bay.
Okay. Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you, um. As 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 Bill just mentioned a few minutes ago too, we're we're getting wrapped all up in the weeds. And I certainly don't mind getting involved in the exhaust and. How to do it, but I think that the petitioner needs to come back to the board. With. What their, what their plan is, they're putting in just for just for. Making a statement, three X Y Z exhaust units. Here's the size. Here's the decibel, here's where the motor's gonna be located, the fans are gonna be located outside or on the roof or on the porch, wherever. Here's the DB level that they're gonna emit. Um, okay, how close to the boundary is that, does it stay within bounds of the noise? Uh ordinance for the town or for the state, I don't know. But right now, I don't, I'm not faulting the petitioner, but I don't know that those are known entities to the petitioner at this moment. We can't make, I can't make a decision on something that I really don't know what they're gonna put in, I'm hearing it all. But I I think they need to come back and and get this stuff in front of the building commissioner also. The the building commissioner might say, yeah, but that that back porch, uh back deck is, that's uh, you know, thirty eight years old, for example. You can't just cut that, you're gonna have to replace it in its entirety, I don't know, I think there's too many unknowns for us to try to make. Uh, technical decisions, that's my input.
Thank you, Jerry, that's that's where I was going, but you know, I was struggling, just trying to figure out what what we're talking about here. So I didn't realize there was a deck out back. Um, and and I don't think she knows, you know, cuz we don't have a picture of it, so we we can't understand it. Uh, even a pen and paper sketch of what she's talking about would be wonderful.
Okay, so there's, let me try to explain it because unfortunately, like, this has been going on way too long and I apologize if I sound rude, it's just. You have to understand, it's been since, I don't know, April, May, June, July, August, now we're going into September and we're still haven't come to a decision. And I'm now getting backlash because. Mario just keeps asking me, when are you gonna do it, when are you gonna do it, and the circumstances is shit like. Very hard because we were at Powder Mill, everything was fine, but because the landlord didn't wanna do what he needed to do, this is where. Like what we've come to, so there is a porch. The porch is actually fairly new because before we got the property, the landlord for Glendale had replaced it because of. The damage or whatever it was and how it was. So in the back, there is. The deck, there's. In there, on the deck, it goes to three doors. We, I would just wanna cut part of it, just so we can put that vacuum to suck out the thing. I'm sorry that I can't give you specifics, I know it's big and round and it's. The noise, I'm not sure, but it would be only go during business hours, we're not gonna be doing it overnight or anything like that. For the odor, I would have to find a very good one. Um, just so I can make sure that it's compl- in compliance for the town, the state. And everyone around us, so we're not. Um, so we're not having complaints that, you know, we're not complying.
So, Joanna, Joanna, let let me make a pause here for a moment. If if you think about what Jerry just described. For us to make a consideration, whether it's more substantial or not to the neighborhood, we need to know what we're going to be voting on. And a big round tube kind of box kind of thing, someplace on a deck that we never heard of before. Is not something we can simply make a vote on. And and your comment about this going on a long time, yeah, it has. Because we're not getting the information that we need, and we you've missed a few of the discussion time to push this forward. So I don't, I don't wanna get down that that route, I just wanna know what are the specific things, the bit specific structural things. That we need to consider that might be more sub- substantially detrimental to the neighborhood or not. And and what we have is a list here is an unknown vacuum filter for odor, an unknown vacuum filter for dust. Uh, something about putting a structure around the porch on the back, adding a car lift. Adding air conditioners, and one that I remember from last time, you were talking about trenches. You know, water controlled trenches or or solvent controlled trenches or something inside the building, we haven't talked about that one tonight yet.
I didn't say anything about trenches, I said that before we moved into Glendale. Cuz it was a detail shop before, the person who had the detail shop never had a. Um, well, to put all the water in. So before we moved in, the landlord had put in that well.
For the auto detailing or for you?
No, for the auto detailing, because part of what we were doing at Glendale, we needed to wash cars. And we were just using it there, um, and that's why they had to put the well in in. Something about um. From all I understood was the town knew that there was no well, so they were cracking down on that. Um, detail shop, so the landlord put it in, but I didn't say anything about trenches.
Well, that that's what we heard from one of the previous discussions, that there was a bunch of trenches put in. And if it was put in for the previous occupant, that's okay, I just didn't get that clear from before. So, my feeling here is either we take a vote on all of these items that we don't know anything about. Or you come back to us with a specific item with its decimal reading for the noise makers. How you're planning on closing off this porch, because that's a new structural item. What kind of car lift you're talking about, because that's gonna dig a big hole in the ground to put the pedestals to lift it up, or you're gonna do any mill racks that just sits in on floor loose. I don't know what kind you're talking about. And so come back to us specifically with what these items are, or we can vote tonight and move it forward and say they're all more stuck, we're probably more. Substantially detrimental or not, because we don't know. Your choice.
I will wait until next month, but I'm just saying is like, I really, it's just, I I also work. I don't, I'm not ever at Glendale, I'm only doing this because it's my husband and this is business and. I've stepped away from that business because.
How does that fit with getting us the information we need?
It just means that I have to ask him, and if he doesn't know, then I have to tell him to go figure it out and then give me all the information, because. I'm not about to do all the work just to get him the information, cuz technically he should be here explaining all this, not having me do it.
If I may, you have to remember the, and I understand your point and I hear you and empathize with this, but these are also volunteers that are taking their time. Most of them.
No, I understand.
Well, you understand, and they they wanna make it as efficient as possible and help you wherever they can help you, so. I I think I take what the board said and consider, there are, they're saying they can do a vote now. With what they feel is, you know, insufficient knowledge, but it's it's your choice. And that would decide whether the application proceeds forward or not. Or you can come back, they've given you a couple of things here, which, yeah, it is gonna be some homework, you're gonna have to go, I mean, but. On one hand, I understand it's a pain, but in other applicants have done this like weekly. So they they've told you that, so I I I have to stand in for my board here, and that, you know, their their time is very valuable as well. If I may, and and I'm not at all trying to minimize the difficulty of this, and I.
Well, I know, it's just cuz I. My, the difficulty I'm having is you guys give me what you need, I go and I ask and tell him this is what I need. Then he gives me whatever information, so I bring it back to you guys, but it's not enough, so then I have to go and do it again and again and again and again. And I'll do it until next year, if that's what the thing is, it's just like. I need like. Cuz now I say we're gonna put a vent, oh, now I need to know how much is going away, how much it like, I if I knew about this last time, then I would have gone it, but that's okay, I will. Wait.
Oh, Joanna, Joanna. Think think about it for a moment, you're in a quiet residential neighborhood, and a guy says he's gonna put in a, you know, a vent for his workshop. And it comes back, he's got a jet engine blowing out the side of his building at at his house. We need to know how much stuff, you're gonna be noise. Uh, and distraction to the neighborhood to determine if it's more detrimental or not, and and we have no information.
No, I understand, and I also explained that it's gonna also be during work hours too. And I understand that people have different shifts, but I know the majority of the people around are out, but. Again, I understand, and that's why I would do everything, just so we can pass it and go to the next steps if. I have to find a way to do a noise cancelling thing, or if there's even such a thing for a vacuum vent.
Alright, so we have.
Well, to be clear, if I may, I if it does go to zone to the planning board, the board, the planning board, you're gonna need that for them anyway. All this stuff, they're gonna, you know, the the they're gonna be looking a lot more in particulars, so it's not like it's going to be um. You know, for nothing, in other words, you're you'll, you know.
So, let's let's put it this way, we're the nice guys, the planning board is very analytical. They need to know exactly what's gonna happen in this town, that's why they're the planning board, they need to know the details. Our charter here is only structural things. Some of the things that you got into last time about the the parking of cars elsewhere and so forth. That's planning board stuff, that's not us. We just wanna know what's happening to the structure. And the more specific you can get, diagrams showing where is things happening on the back porch, pictures that are marked up. Anything that can help us understand what it is, that we can make a comment on whether it's more substantially detrimental or not.
So.
Chair? Yes, please.
Well, yeah. Uh, just. I mean, I know I couldn't vote on it tonight in in good conscience, but I I I understand the petitioner's uh dilemma. Uh, it's not her background, it's not her husband's background. So, what many have to do, have to hire a third party. I'm not telling you to spend thousands and thousands of dollars, but you might need to hire a third party, explain to them what's gonna happen. A mechanical electrical type person would be a contract. They size the equipment, they tell you what equipment it's gonna be, where it's gonna go, they know what building codes are. So they know what can and cannot be done, cuz you're guessing at what you think you need to do, and I and I get that. But we can't vote on your guesstimate of what you think your husband shop will or or may need. We 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 need to vote on specifics, we're putting in three X Y Zs, uh, two ABCs. Uh, we're taking this section of the rear deck down, this is where the uh. Uh PVC piping is gonna go, uh, here's the decibel level of the of all the exterior. Uh, and at the property line, uh, the sound level will not exceed X. So, as long as we know that, we can vote on, doubt that, very difficult, very difficult. So and I I I I hear you, but. We we need more specifics, unfortunately.
So, Bill. Uh, when in our next meeting, the should be the uh end of September, when would that meeting be?
That would be. Fourth uh, one, looks like the, uh, twenty third of September.
So Joanna, can you be ready with what specific items, what plant you plan to do on the porch? And what kind of car lift you're talking about for for these uh one, two, three, four, five items? By twenty third of September?
Yes, um, that should be able to get a um someone to come out to look at it too. And if Bill wants, I can send him a picture of the deck, what it looks like outside, so you have it for the future as well.
Yeah, that'd be great, that would be appreciated.
And and on that picture, if you could indicate what you would be planning to do to close it off, you said? To to and then cutting a wall opening, where would that be, what kind of things are you talking about for that exposed deck? Because that's a structural change that we'd have to consider if it's substantially more detrimental or not. Okay?
Yeah.
And so on these filter units, the question is, where is the motor gonna be? And then the decibel noise and so forth that's heading outside. And the efficiency of the odor control. You know, what, how how frequently do the, does the filter have to be changed and so on? The kind of car lift that you're putting in, because that's, if it's the kind that has the piston coming up from the floor, now you have a. You know, a construction project in the floor, if it's a kind that just sits on the floor. You know, with the cantilever jacks and stuff, that's something different, but we'd like to know what it is, so if you could put that all together for us. And have them itemized, odor, dust, closing off the back porch, the car lift, air conditioners. Uh, those specific items is what we have found that you want to make as a structural difference in the building. Uh, those specific items is what we have found that you want to make as a structural difference in the building. So Danny, I I haven't gotten back to you yet. I suppose if you're still there and wanna, you know, make your comment, uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Danny Schisler, thirty Parker Street. Um, I have a a suggestion and then a question. Um, my suggestion to the applicant and to the to the board would be to. Maybe give this a little more structure just for her own sanity. And ask for product information sheets for the equipment she's going to install. It should be readily available from the manufacturer. It could have the specifications of the size and type of equipment she's gonna put in, and then it would allow the board to see. At a glance, all of the um parameters that they can, that they need to assess. The second thing would be a site plan to show where all of this equipment is going from an aerial uh view. It could be like a hand drawn, easily hand drawn site plan or something more professional, but um. My question to the board is. In the vein of what someone brought up earlier, which is having to go in front of the planning board. Um, I'm curious about what methods have been used to determine what structural improvements need to be made to this building. To uh make uh the applicant's use a permissible use. Has it gone to inspectional services? Has it gone to the fire department? Because what I suspect is that even if you get through this meeting and get an approval. You're gonna end up in front of body regulatory bodies that have much stricter requirements. And you may come up against something that you hadn't anticipated, so. I'm kind of confused about the order of operations and why is going into the ZBA before. Potentially other regulatory bodies like the planning board um.
Yeah.
But.
I I don't know if I can, yeah, I don't know if I can give you all the accurate answers, but our particular. Uh, bylaws. Have that table of uses indicating that the planning board deals with auto body shops, auto body, or excuse me, auto repair shops. And that being the case, they have to do that. But we also have this thing that is the nonconforming structure comes in front of us. So. We've decided that we're gonna do it first. And then to say, yeah, structurally, these are the minor events or major events that we need to consider. And then the planning board, and that's why I call them analytical, because they are, they have to be, to take in all those issues that you mentioned. And probably a bunch more.
Well, to be clear, and to be clear, going with the planning board for site, you you know, they're gonna need a site plan, they're gonna need extensive studies. It's going to be a lot more burden on the applicant than than this particular hearing. So it stands to reason out of courtesy to the applicant and our business investment in the area. That we want to be as uh forthright and and and. Respectful of what the applicant is gonna have to provide. In this case, um, we did have our town council at the last meeting or last two meetings. Uh, and tried to figure out exactly how far does the zoning board need to go. And probably, and this would fall on me, I let the uh first meeting go a little bit out of scope. For what the zoning board really was. Uh, charged with. Uh, and we clarified that with town council now where it's supposed to be. But um, so far as the 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 planning board review, this would not be um. It wouldn't be allowed to be in front of them, because I I suppose they could go in front of the planning board and the planning board say, well. Contingent upon zoning board finding. So that's sort of the order of operations and how it's decided. We try to be the most uh efficient and economical, respect the business, but um. There's a lot more to provide for the planning board, and they're gonna want more of this sort of thing.
Thank you. That's great clarification and uh just one more brief question as a follow up. I I would wonder if it would be possible for the applicant to go to the planning board. Or fire department or inspectional services or all three, just for a courtesy review. Before they would have to go to those boards, just to understand what additional requirements there might be, given that, you know, they may be substantial. Um, again, just for for her sanity and just knowing what what lies ahead.
And I think we discussed this a little bit with uh before when we were talking about environmental impacts and these sort of things. Um, each board has a specific charge and a scope that they must stay within by statute, and they can factor in other. Aspects and for example, uh, we root all um. Of these applications through the for the police department, conservation commission or or whoever. Uh, and they're invited to comment on it, and each board can factor that in. But they don't mandate that and they stay uh within their scope, and that's critical. So for example, with the fire department. Um, it would not be in the planning board or the zoning boards purview to say, oh, go get uh. You know, until you provide what you're gonna, uh, how you're gonna address the fire chiefs. Regulations that are outside of this planning board scope, they they couldn't do that. On the other hand, they could say, you know, our approval is contingent upon the fire chief's approval, and that would be about as far as goes, which is what they typically do. Same with conservation and um, so that's how that works, but it's good questions.
No, yeah, that that's right, Danny. Your your questions are right on. And and it's good to hear your questions come out. And we do have an opening on the zoning board if you're interested.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll get back to you on that. Thank you.
He's in my sights. He'll end up on another board somewhere. I got him.
All right, so. Uh, she said, Joanna said she would be ready by September twenty third. So I would like a motion to continue this hearing until January, September twenty third, shame on me, until September twenty third.
Make a motion to continue uh the case of six Glendale Street until September twenty third, twenty twenty four.
Right, a second, Jerry second. So.
Before we vote, Mr. Chair, may I, I would like to say more thing if I could to Joanna before you close.
Are you still there, Joanna?
Oh.
Yes, I'm still here. Sorry, I'm just dealing with my daughter, but.
Sorry, Joanna, the the only thing I was gonna say before the board closes. Put yourself in their shoes. You understand their charge. These are volunteers and if you, if I had you on a board and you were making these decisions, what would you need? To make an informed decision based on the criteria that you know they're reviewing it under. So just sometimes that helps too. And I can always help you, you know, if I if I if you have any questions, reach out. But remember, this is just a board that, not just a board, it's like, hey, my mom is just a mom. No, it was um. Uh, but but this is very important to 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 understand. How these things, how to set expectations and just put yourself in their position as a volunteer board. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Yes, and I apologize for snapping. It's just it hasn't been easy. Because and I apologize for missing last month, but I got out of the hospital and I was like, I I fell asleep and that was it. That's why I didn't show up. Um, but no, I understand. I've been volunteer like and I've. Done a lot with other people and I know. When people were trying to explain things and it gets confusing when no one has all the information. So also one person and I try to get the information from the person that ask is asking for all this stuff. And I only get bits and pieces, so I just go off of what he's giving me and it gets. Then it gets like overwhelming when I have to explain it to you guys.
So. My suggestion, Joanna, is not to try explaining it, but to have us get the data. That you have dug up. And if that data is in, as as Danny had commented, if that data is in. The the technical sheet for the particular units that you wanna put in. That's great. That gives us all the information we need, or it should, to to get those answers, and then your comment about the porch. Uh, just, you know, talk to the building commissioner. He's a great guy, and maybe he can uh. Yeah, give you some guidance as to what what you would wanna do on that porch to make it. Uh, function properly. And 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 just, you know, be ready for the planning board. You're you're gonna need somebody to coach you on how to deal with the millions of questions that the planning board is gonna be asking you for this. And Bill might be your candidate to help you, but it it also is somebody had said earlier this evening. It might be important to get somebody who's been through this before. A contractor or some other technical guidance kind of person to help you get it done, because yes, it's been a long time. So with that, um, I need a vote on the motion in front of us to move this, continue it until the twenty third of September. So John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes. Brad's not voting for the on this one. So. Good luck, Joanna, and we'll see you in a month.
See you in a month. Thank you. Have a good night.
So. Gio, you're up next.
Yes.
So let let me introduce the hearing. This is the One Powder Mill Road, the BP Gas Station, continued from July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. The app application filed by the business owner, Wusik Chang, AKA Gio, One Powder Mill Road, Maynard. The subject property is an existing BP gas station located in downtown mixed-use overlay district with underlying zoning into business district. Per sections three, two, three, and ten, two of the zoning bylaws, the applicant seeks special permit approval to allow overnight storage of more than one commercial vehicle. Not to exceed twenty five thousand G V W. These are U-Haul trucks and so forth at the subject property. And the way we left it is I can remember a long time ago, last month, it was. You you were gonna talk to some folks about possible screening. For that side there along Wallfam Street. And you were gonna prepare a map or something to show where these trucks would be parked. So that the screening along Wallfam Street might be effective.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Good. What do you got?
So um, um, in proportion of that, um, we met with Bill and um. Uh, think we, Bill had the uh new drawing, how to fit the trucks in the site. And um, Bill, can you share that picture to board?
Yeah, I'll get it. Let me uh, let's see. Oh, yeah, just keep talking and I'll find yours.
So that's where, how we're gonna raise cars and um. No, the number of cars. Yeah, so we'll show how many cars will be uh, you know, like stored overnight.
Oh, cars, you mean trucks?
Yes. It's it's not huge trucks, it's just a um. The van size.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not not that, like a tank sized one. So those kind of cars um there and. The Wallfam Street. Um, one is like, um, we talked about planting some trees. That that's the picture to your truck getting a gas. It's not the way part.
Okay, there's one picture here. You see that now?
Just looking at a somebody's leg and a truck.
Well, we're talking about footwear, I thought. There we are. Can you see that?
Yeah, now we're looking at Wallfam Street without the shrubbery.
Right. And.
Can you find the drawing?
Oh, the drawing?
Yeah. Showing the trucks like.
Fairly, I'm not sure. You mean the the little sketch that you did or that I did?
Yeah, you did.
Oh, I don't know if it's on here. I just did that on the side of the road with you over there. Um, but here's the back. And I'll have to look to see if I if I have that saved somewhere. There's one there. That's a pretty good one. Let me, I just add, I can add uh one thing to this, um. While we're looking, Mr. Chair, um. I visited the site, uh, and. What I was surprised about was that the. The amount of room in the rear, as you can see here, here's uh five vehicles right here. Um. And uh, give me a couple of minutes. I wasn't ready for that. I thought uh. Let's see if I can find something else. I'll stop.
This this diagram that you were talking about. Should be something that we can include in the minutes of this meeting.
Right.
For all posterity, so that we know exactly what we agreed on. So if it's in Bill's handwriting, I guess that's okay. But it should be something that you have put together, Gio, as to what you think. Is the appropriate storage to have, you know, each truck be able to get out of there in the morning or whatever.
Yeah, exactly. Um, Bill showed me the drawing, like, it's much nicer version than my handwriting. So has the six cars there and then two cars in the back. And then the right side, it's all empty, so the people can bring it in without any concerns. So that that was nicely drawn, and that that should be in the min- this mini minute.
It it should be once we get a hold of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sure Bill has it.
Uh, well, if I did, like I said, it wasn't meant for the being the the exhibit. It was kind of example I doodled for you, but. I'm trying to see if I have it somewhere, but while you're going, um, now, in the meantime, I did coordinate with the tree committee.
You're changing the topic, Bill. Are we, are we unknown on the truck layout, parking layout?
Yes, I I, to be clear, I am not presenting the applicant with plan. I gave a a sketch of how it could work and would be. Something to work up and present. I do not want to be, and I want to be misconstrued that, you know, this is on um. This is something that that I'm creating with. I am heavily involved with suggesting. Things that might work, and that's it. So I was, that's why I'm used to representing an applicant, and I can't at this point. I try, certainly try to assist wherever I can.
So.
But I didn't, that's why that's not here.
Okay, so let me just pass the buck on that one. Bill is sending it back to you, Gio. As you need to supply the truck parking layout. So you can take what his notes were as you remember them, and I think you need to prepare that effectively for us to talk about.
Yeah, I thought we'll be, yeah, sure tonight, but maybe that was the mistake. But um.
Gio, didn't we leave it as that, here's something to work off of, bring them back a proposal?
I I couldn't remember. What exactly we talked about, so, you know, I was very happy to see that. But I mean, that's the one, so um, maybe if it has to continue, then I can bring it to you next month.
Yeah, to make the best uh uh work here and the best, uh, I think. I think I could share a lot. I've I've practically, I think I've. I I'm not sure if I voted this to the board or not, but I have. I coordinated with the tree committee, that's how, and DPW, and I have the highlights here, which I'm in an email. Uh, which I can absolutely share, and I could tell you the essence of what uh everybody, I mean, we had it uh down to the um. Tree types from the tree committee. Um, so I would be. Let's see if I have, I'm trying to see if I have anything here.
It's interesting, Bill, that you're digging into the tree stuff. But you passed on the parking. So maybe Gio should talk about what he wants. For screening, his first and second choice for screening. Be it trees or a stockade fence or whatever. I mean, I I don't know where he's thinking.
So shall we talk about the pens?
Yeah, so we're we're sort of neutral on the parking right now, because we don't have a map. But we can talk about the screening options.
So the screening, the Wallfam Street one, which we have all the like weeds grown over the fence. So we're, Bobak and I are all into like, they're cutting all those weeds and stuff like that, if the town's okay not. Blaming us like touching um their land and. Something like that, so we'll do it. It's 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 not a problem, and then we always wanted to do so, so that's how we keep our side, but. We don't touch outside of fans, but we'll do it. It's okay. We don't touch outside of fans, but we'll do it. It's okay. And um, uh, and then um, you know, we'd like to put some trees. And then um, I'm not a tree expert, but um. As far as I understand, it takes some time um, until it gets settled in. To the ground, but after a couple of years, once it's settled and then the tree will grow. Uh, as its own. So we. Then, you know, Bill and I, like, we thought about removing the fences and then putting the trees, but um, the slope is. Kind of steep. So if someone, um, you know, walking down the. Waltham Street, if they get dizzy or like tripped over. Any object then might be danger danger to them to fall into the gas station. So we like to keep the um, chain. Um, fence, but we like to have the trees so that naturally kind of. Um, just commingles with the fence safety net.
Are you are you thinking about an evergreen kind of tree or one that loses its leaves each fall?
I can. Right, I have. Sure, I have the recommended trees too.
Yes.
That's right. And so you would you would propose some kind of an evergreen tree and that chain link fence you would leave that?
Yes.
Okay. What other uh, screening options are you considering elsewhere on the property? Anything?
That's that's uh, basically what we like to do. We uh, kind of were hesitant doing the new fence. Stuff like that, but I mean, if we tried once for the trees and the flowers, but. Uh, flower failed, but this time those kind of um. Uh, less like less like water free or. Very water infected trees selections. When it was given to us and then we're very into it, because because that's something we're looking for it. So that'll be it for um, the Waltham Street.
So between you and uh, the next shop there, the Jiffy Loop, is there any consideration of screening along that side where you got the bagged up?
That side, um, we talked about it. And then I went back to the station, meeting my people, because they're the one. Direct the cars and customers and then they are the one to bring it, bring the trucks back and uh, put the head out first. And then um, their biggest fear was about. If they let the customer pull in, head in. Then they had to deal with the truck backing out to the street. And if the fence is high enough to block the view, then they said they're not gonna do it. They're gonna have the customer pull the truck in. And then they had to pull the head out to the street and they, the customer had to put that back in because. They have their insurance, so that what what some happens and then their insurance should cover it. If our people do it, then, you know, that may put some risk on the business side. So. So they like to have the um, line of sight with all the vehicles coming from the Powder Mill Road. All the way down to the lodging um, or um, that the curb side from all the way that there and then. And then um, the biggest fear was there's a group of people sometimes walking from the Jiffy Loop parking lot down to. The McDonald or seven eleven side and some school kids, they ride bicycle. Very high, yeah, the Jiffy Loop and then they come all the way down and they they wait for the. Um, the uh, like a cross signal and um, if. Our truck had to back out. They wouldn't be able to see them until the truck, back of the truck hit into the street. Then until they see like um, the end of fence. So it's very concerning. To me and to my people that if. We had to have some screen blocking the view from the street side, then that would be the great. Safety concern for us and for the pedestrians who walking down the street.
So on on that Jiffy Loop side.
Yes.
There is an open chain link fence. It's probably what, three feet tall?
Three or four.
Yeah. What are you considering doing, if anything, with that fence?
So so and then another one is like we, uh, whenever it becomes loose. Um, we have like metal wire to, you know, tighten up everything, but. Every time the Jiffy Loop oil truck comes in. And then they kind of knock it down and because the truck is big too, like they when they back in and they hit the. The chain fence. Um, so maybe the best way. For us to do is like, I'm gonna repair the same height with the like a see-through type of material there, just the chain link. But maybe um, just fix it not. To be seen as um, just rusted um, uh, like abandoned. But just put it up like to make it tight. Yeah, and then maybe um, the white color paint on it.
So it, you're you're saying you're gonna keep it as an open chain link is what you want?
Yes, yes, that's a um, it it's like, um, it's very important for us for safety concern.
Gio, excuse me, Mr. Chair, Gio, you talked about the plan that I I drew up for you, that we sketched up for you. That's uh, we. Uh, basically mirrored the exact area that the existing fence is where there's a four foot fence. And I think I proposed a six foot fence there. So if the the uh, the plan, the sketch that I did as a basis, let's be clear. That fence did not extend to Powder Mill Road. That it stopped where it was and there was a. Proposal for six foot opaque fence in the existing, in the location of the existing fence facing Jiffy Loop. So there is. A matter of fact, we go to it. Um, there is a a um, visibility window. There and I think it's, we have to be consistent here with what we're trying to do, uh, if we're working together on a plan and that was. Um, on that plan. So I I think. As were the list of trees. Now, I I do have the list of trees, Mr. Chair, if you want to go over. Uh, what was recommended, everything. I think everything was laid out on that plan as a general sketch. But that was, you know, and if 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 we're gonna pare it back, that's fine. But I I want to make sure that the board uh, has all the information with it.
I I wasn't going into the details of the trees other than. Evergreen versus losing their leaves. Um, there are probably bands of trees out there that that work better. Because of the, you know, the way they would fill in sideways rather than get twenty feet tall. I don't know that. Um, but I'm I'm just trying to get what Gio's. Primary consideration is because some of those trees are probably pretty pricey. And some of those trees are probably more economical, maybe fast growing, slow growing. And I think it's his decision, Bill, as to what he wants to ask us to approve.
Understood. Uh, and again, this all uh, the what the tree committee did send did have approximate pricing. Quantities, spacing, et cetera.
And and so out of that, does Gio have from his viewpoint? A preferred tree and quantity and height and all his other peculiarities of the decision. For us to to look at. And if so, if there's a preferred tree and amount that he wants to use, let's hear it. And and then we can go back and talk about what's happening on the Jiffy Loop side.
Hmm, so. So it's evergreen and uh, we're thinking. Yeah, we're we're thinking something.
Sure.
Yeah, something like this growing.
I see a green horizontal line. It looks like a hedge.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like tree, I I know this. Tree planted one and one and one and when it grows like it expands like this and then um, yeah, they train. Uh, when it's fully grown and they, just like um, you see um. Uh, some residential like fence area instead of actual fence, they plant this kind of trees so that.
Do you have a name for that? Do you have a name for that particular tree?
Yeah, it doesn't really have the name here.
Because to me, that that image looked like a privet. And I've got privet trees because I was hoping to grow a hedge out of privates and the darn thing. Is only keeping its leaves when it feels like it and on our property it doesn't. So it it does lose its leaves if that's a privet. If it's a needle like a pine tree or. Or uh, an arborvitie, that's different. So I'm curious what tree you're picking out.
Hmm, we're we're not a like a tree expert, but um, uh, based on the list we were given. Like there is some suggestions and um. If the tree is okay by the board, then uh, we can probably pick. Um, couple of different type of trees, which one will grow in there?
Yeah, so you 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 experienced our earlier uh, discussion. And I I think some of those same issues are gonna be brought up here as for us to vote on something. We need to know what we're voting on.
Yes.
Danny is gone.
Yeah, they left.
He said privates. Oh, these aren't the best. So. Yeah, um, so maybe Laurel, boxwood. Um, I think you mentioned it Niagara arborvitie. Bamboo, um, two of the trees.
Be careful of bamboo. That would be everything you want. It won't stop.
Right, it will spread fast. Yeah, so I mean, we, all we remember was. Two years ago, we tried once and then everything died. So uh, we're kind of hesitant, but. Until we uh, learned that this kind of trees are uh, very great to. Uh, as a like a sub, like alternatives to the actual fence. And then we liked the green, so um, you know, that that's where we're going into and.
Yeah. You got a pretty confined area there, so maybe bamboo is a good choice. It'll grow very tall, very thick and it'll stop at the pavement.
Right.
But it might not stop.
Well, well, but I mean, when I, when we went down to Maryland and then some neighbors had the bamboo and then it was very confined space. It's well grown and it's very tall and then it just added the atmosphere. So I kind of liked it, but my wife is still so.
Because of the roots, the roots goes everywhere, so.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, bamboo is my choice too.
Yeah. All right, we have a blank screen. Go ahead, Bill. What are you showing? I see a, I see a car and a gas station.
Hmm.
Oh, um, maybe I'm the Jiffy Loop fence.
Yeah, on the fence. I'm trying to zoom in.
Hmm.
So i- is this where you're talking about for the bamboo?
Yeah.
No, no.
The other side, the wall, the wall.
The other side, the wall fence.
Right, right. Okay, yeah. Well, yeah, the um. But I don't know if that was on Danny's list, but I saw I saw of you the list from uh, trees.
So. What I'm hearing is. Some suggestions have been offered to you, Gio.
Hmm.
But I have not heard your primary decision as what you would want. To answer our question and if we say no, then what's your second choice? I mean, if we're not, we're not well organized is what I'm hearing. Is that?
Right, because I mean, last time we talked about it and then I didn't really um. Really um, get into the like points until I saw the first hearing. So now I know what you're looking for. So um, you know, I'm kind of preparing that because if I had known this.
Yeah.
How it goes, then probably today, tonight will be the last one, but um, this is where.
Sorry, continuing, yeah, it looks like.
Yeah, I mean, we learned and then I like, I like the board. Like you people that um, is volunteering and sharing your time and about. The how we're gonna make beautiful in the town. So we're all for it. Don't don't worry, but um, so now I know we. Because I mean, last time when we had to have a fence, actual fence with the six feet tall, then. It I didn't really like it because it blocks the view and then it's not natural, but when the tree option came in and that we liked it. So we're gonna go for a tree, but we didn't know we had to pick a tree until like the specific case. Casual occasions and noise level decibels, stuff like that. So we're gonna go for which tree might be better with this. On the Wolf.
Yeah, now let's talk about the the Jiffy Loop side. Because that that's sort of an ugly separator between those two properties. And is that your fence to start with?
I believe so.
So if it is your fence, is there anything better than that four foot bent chain link?
Well, I mean, Mr. Chair, pers- personally. Because I I care, the top priority is um, the safety. I don't really like the fence there because. Nobody can stop Jiffy Loop oil truck hitting the fence. It's always. Hazardous items there and our truck too. Sometimes some customer bring it in, they hit it, but they just back out as if they didn't, they they didn't hit. So my personal preference not to have the fence. But my wife still wants to have the fence there. But and then Bill mentioned like it has to be tall to block the view. And um, my wife was sitting. Uh, putting herself in the U-Haul renter and then she said if it's all blocked, then. Yeah, she may be scared to pull in the trucks out of, into the street from that side. And then um, from my standpoint, if I don't see any people walking down. Um, from Jiffy Loop side or on the sidewalk, then I wouldn't be able to pull the truck out of the site. So so I'm kind of stuck.
All right, let let me throw a thought out because I've been doing a lot of traveling lately. And the thing that I hate, but I also love are curbs. What what if there was a curb separating the two properties going back well beyond what you need for a sightline? And then you put some shrubs between the two buildings, let's say, back where the the trucks would be parked. So you are camouflaging the trucks as they are stored, but once you pull them out in front of the building. You now have adequate visibility because it's just a curb. You can paint it bright green if you want to match your company colors. And and just have that to the street or to the patent to the sidewalk. I'm just throwing out a silly idea, but the issue is to add some screening. For the bright orange trucks that don't go with your green logo.
Bright orange and green can go together. I mean, personally, I like U-Haul truck design better than. Um, other, um, what is it, Enterprise or any other.
Yeah.
Yeah, any other truck. They they don't have any concept, but U-Haul has birds, flowers and cape cod. I'm very impressed by those designs. So it's not that ugly.
Because, you know, I I'm trying to read Bill's mind here because. He he's a fan of this downtown overlay district, which puts the pedestrian experience and other things high on the list. And you know, clean and organized is great. A bent chain link fence. Is something you see in a, in a, let's call it a derelict city environment. And and so if we have something that's prettier than a bent chain link fence. That would probably satisfy Bill's interest in a enhanced um, pedestrian experience.
I know Bill is our biggest struggle now.
So Bill, you're sharing your screen, but it's not showing anything.
It's not?
No, but I I got the list that you emailed. Is that what you're gonna show? Because one of Danny's options was to plant um. One of Danny's options was to plant um uh oh God, what is that? Oh, Virginia creeper. I presume he means that along the uh Jiffy Loop side. I don't know. But it seems as though uh eastern red cedar is best option on the Waltham side.
Maybe um you know, right after we talked about it, and I thought about bamboo, if we have to put a plant. And then I I was the only one for bamboo. My wife said no bamboo.
Well, we're trying to go, the town is trying to go with native plants and I it looks to me as though the list that Danny gave are they're all native plants and that the one that is a um per um oh my God, my brain's not deciduous. The evergreen is the he said the eastern red cedar is evergreen and extremely hardy. That seems like what he would recommend for the um for the Waltham Street side and the uh and um the Virginia creeper, he says fix the fence and plant native vines along the Virginia creeper. Is readily available, extremely hardy, and a great fall color will take over in no time, as I can attest to in my backyard.
Well, that's a good idea to use it, use the fence, the existing fence as a as a trellis.
Yeah.
Well, I hadn't thought of that one. That's good. So.
What's happening with the Waltham Street side, right? Because the fence was all weaved with the.
Yeah. Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick thing, just like the one before. It's uh eight thirty-six right now. We can talk about this now until eleven thirty-six tonight. And when my belief that we're not gonna be any further ahead, they said we're gonna throw on a lot of names and concepts. I think I think this petition has got to come back with a sketch. Here's the property. Here's the fence that's you know bordering, you know, Jiffy Loop. We're gonna remove it, we're gonna put X, Y, Z, bang, but and here's option A and option B. The Waltham side, Waltham Street side, option A, option B, that's what we're gonna do. Here's how many trucks we're gonna be able to put in there, nine, eight, four, whatever. That's it, all done. Now there's something to decide. Otherwise, I mean, I don't mind listening, but you know, it it I I just think we're gonna talk round and round and round and we're gonna just push it to next month anyway.
All the all the ingredients have been provided. So I would say Gary makes a very good point. Ingredients are there for every everything that in my opinion should be addressed to meet the spirit of the downtown overlay district. There's even a a draft sketch.
But we haven't seen it, Bill.
Well, I understand, but I I assumed my fault. I I wanted to help the applicant along. I assumed that that would be something that would be worked on and provided to the board.
Because that's what we asked for when we met with him last.
Mr. Chair, that is on me.
It's my fault. It's my fault. I should have done it.
It doesn't really matter. Right, Jerry, Jerry said the right thing here. I appreciate Jerry for your your astute comments. I'm starting to get sucked into the weeds here because I love talking plants. My wife's a plant nut as well. But we should continue this with the assignment that Geo comes back with a sketch of how many trucks. We we had some confusion on that initially. And so we need a regular sketch showing where how many trucks are gonna be. Where's the park here sign going for those trucks so they don't block the pumps overnight or whatever?
Okay, but the sign is is essential. I I don't, I try not to have any signs because uh because um people find their way. I mean, if everything is okay without sign.
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, that's something for the board to push back on one way or the other. But the point is, you wanted to put a whole bunch of trucks behind and around your your shop building. And if people come in late at night and they didn't see that there was an opening on the side, they're gonna leave it in front somewhere. And you you need to have some way to control all those people. I I commend you for doing this because I've always wanted to have a a useful U-Haul here in town. I've used them every so often, and I have to plan ahead and go somewhere.
Okay, okay.
Just to organize, because it's a small lot compared to some that have a giant parking lot. You can just park in and be done with it. And so you need to have that plan for us to put it into the record for posterity. To say that you have this permit because we're not gonna be on this board forever. And twenty years from now, when when the next board people find a complaint or some issue with yours, they wanna go back and see what we did. And and so we need to know what that that roadmap is for where you're parking. And we need to have an understanding of what shrubberies or solid fence or whatever you're gonna put on both sides. Uh the tree idea on the Waltham Street side is great. On the other side, uh something other than chain link would be my preference because chain link is like ugly. But think it through, think what you wanna do. And then give us the list, not through Bill, but give us your list as to what you do on the left and on the right. I assume we don't want anything across the front because that's really nutsy there because, you know, you gotta be able to see. But something to diminish the impact of a wall of orange behind the green signage. Of the, you know, your your logo sign. Because this came to us originally because somebody didn't like to see all that orange. I don't know who that was or where that came from, but they had a complaint and it brought you into into our domain here. So let's do the best. All right, so is that same date, the twenty-third of September acceptable?
Yes.
So can I get a motion to continue this until that date? You're on mute if you're talking to me, Leslie.
To continue the case of uh number one Powder Mill Road until September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I get a second? Everybody did it. Okay. For your records, Bill, pick one. Um so, need a vote? John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paige?
Yep.
Brad?
Yes.
Jerry?
Oh, we can't talk about it a little more tonight?
Yes. Thank you.
And I'll vote yes, but you already got enough. So I apologize, we didn't get further along, but I think you understand our focus points now.
Yeah, it's very productive, so it's okay. Yeah, we'll be ready.
So with that, we wish you well. We'll see you in a month. And lots of pictures, lots of sketches, all that stuff would be very useful.
Okay.
Thanks. Anything else?
Yes, um board, all of you collectively, um I suspect we're gonna be in contact a lot then over the next week. Um I'm going to be looking, we're probably gonna want to meet before our next meeting on a a a matter that's coming before us.
So what what wait a minute, is that an open meeting meeting?
Uh I don't know. There's no meeting discussed.
So if we're gonna have a meeting, shouldn't we post it?
Oh, of course, of course. So what you do is send a I may, it's very likely I will send a a request for open dates around, so if you could look at your calendars. Um and then I'll be in touch uh uh either way about it, but it's a good possibility we'll need to meet prior to this for another matter. So I will, if you could look at your calendars, I'll be in touch in the next day or two. Okay?
Would that be a forty B related banner? Forty B?
Uh well, yeah, yeah, we we don't wanna go in much into anything because there's a uh meeting issue and but I promise you'll be up to the moment on everything. Um and um I'll be in touch.
Okay, anything else? Or is that it, Bill?
That's enough.
All right, so I need another motion, guys.
Make uh I make a motion to uh to end.
Thirty seconds.
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
I'll be yes as well. Thank you, everyone, for what probably was a very productive meeting, although we don't have much to show for it.
It was good, good discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, folks. Good night.
Bye, everyone.